We'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting. If you would, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let me introduce individuals who are here at the meeting. We've got to my far-left Administrator Schroeder. I'm Commissioner Suge Gold. We have Commissioner Boyce, Council Huddle, and Administrative Assistant John Jesua. So let's start with amendments to the agenda. Do I have any amendments to the agenda? Mr. Frodo.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull item number five, Code Enforcement Procedural Issues. Due to one of the Commissioners not being here, staff is seeking direction from the County Board. I don't feel we will get direction, so I feel it would just be a waste of time. So I'd like to pull that until we have a Commission of three people here.
Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda?
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I've asked some people to come in and give public comment on this issue, so I'm assuming the Board will allow them to give that.
That certainly, that's fine.
Thank you. And I'm okay with the recommendation from Administrator Schroeder.
Okay, do we have a motion to amend or approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, public comments. I'm going to arrange the public comments by subject, and so those individuals who wanted to talk on item 5D, I'll have them come up first. So we've got Don Juski, did I say that right? Close enough?
Is this on? Yeah, Don Andrew Juski. I live in Brookings, 840 House.
Well, that was a whole big name, I apologize.
Yep. Yeah. Okay, so I want to make a recommendation for the Board of Commissioners to consider having a contingency fund for emergency events like we had with the Chetco bar fire. It's my understanding that you were able to successfully capture the cost for the Sheriff's Department, $183,000, and bill it back to FEMA. And I think we've got other events proposed in the future, unknown, that we need to be prepared for, and I would strongly recommend that that's the proper accounting for things like travel expense. When there's a catastrophic event in this county, the travel's going to be in this county. And so I don't want to see another debacle about travel expenses. What if we had to repair a road? Are we going to say the roadmaster can't have his budget go over and we're going to go after that? This is kind of ridiculous, in my view. So I wanted to encourage consideration of a new contingency bookkeeping item. We never know what that dollar amount's going to be. If anybody could predict that, then we'd all be in robotic fashion here. So, no one can actually do that. So that was what I wanted to speak to.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, I'm David Barnes. I for one, glad to see that you pulled this. I protest the naming of this item on the agenda itself. The name of code enforcement is misleading at best and deceptive at worst. This has, this topic has nothing to do with code enforcement, it has to do with policies. They're completely separate legal animals. And I think it is a disservice to the public that you call it that on the agenda. That's not why, you know, anybody who just looks at the agenda and doesn't look at the package isn't going to realize what this is really about. And this is really about the further prosecution of the travel policy. I'd like to point out to this Board also that last year on August the 20th, I believe it was, Kate Brown declared a state of emergency due to the Chetco bar fire. And when she did, I believe that there's, it's, I don't recall the statute number, but it's an ORS number, that local rules such as this get suspended, so that people can't attend to an emergency. And I don't think it's right that you're prosecuting Commissioner Boyce for this when he was acting because this county was burning. You and Commissioner Huxley did nothing. You called into one meeting, you know, like you've told us over the last year, you called into a meeting or two, but other than that, you didn't participate in this last year. So, you know, I just, I think it's wrong of you to continue with this. I really wish you would just table this matter and let it go away. Again, like I pointed out in the last meeting to Mr. Schroeder, there is a fourth option. You know, table this, let it go away. I pointed out to Mr. Huddle now, I read his memo, he had three options. Again, he's forgetting there is a fourth option, and that's just let this go away. Commissioner Boyce doesn't work for you and Commissioner Gold, and Commissioner Huxley, he works for us, the people. And he's out there doing our work, and it's wrong for you to punish him for doing that. Thank you.
Steve Palmerlin?
My name is Stephen Palmer from Brookings. I've lived in the area since 1960, except for a couple of years out of town for school. Last year during the Chetco bar fire, a friend of mine called me. I've volunteered at the South County substations at the Sheriff's Office, and asked me if I'd come and handle phones at the information center next to City Hall. I did that off and on for a few weeks. I saw the people that were down there working. Mr. Boyce was one of them there all the time. To me, that was an investment in the county. Let's say if Brookings would have burnt, it would have decimated the county as far as economics, taxes, and stuff like that. What I see is polit, evil politics being played, and like the last gentleman said, it was a state of emergency. When a state of emergencies happen, you've got to do different things for the welfare of the people in the county. Thank you.
Mr. Palmerlu?
Yes?
When you were volunteering, there was other volunteers, didn't we get up to sometimes 1,200 calls a day?
A week.
Just from Brookings residents needing information? And I, I think you deserve huge kudos for the time you spent day after day.
We had a lot. We had, when I first went down there, there was people from out of the county answering phones, and they didn't have a clue where places were. So when Peggy called me, I didn't hesitate. I went down there and worked some days, very long hours. And to me, that's just, you jump in and help when needed, period.
I saw you there many a late night, too. Huge thanks from all the citizens.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on on the agenda. Chief Brazil recognition, and I've got one individual who wanted to speak to this, Carl
Carl King, Naseka Beach. I had the pleasure of working with John for three or four years when I would attend the Planning Commission meetings and, and also in spending a lot of time talking with him about our volunteer firefighters. And one of the things he was very interested in and concerned about was the fact that when these volunteers go out in response to a call in the county as opposed to in any of the three cities, they have no idea what's in that building that they're going to be asked to go into, perhaps, to put out a fire. They don't know whether there's toxic materials, materials that will cause toxic fumes, explosives, and the like. And one of the things John came around to at the end was, towards the end of supporting, was the effort that was made several years ago to have a business license for businesses in the county that would require those businesses to disclose those materials that they use in their activities that could cause harm to a first responder. And I can think of nothing that would be a better tribute to Captain Brazil than for this Board to take another look at that and adopt it and protect. You know, with one or two exceptions, every firefighter in this county is a volunteer. And to ask them to go into those situations needlessly, putting their lives at risk, is really reprehensible. So again, I think the best tribute to John is to revisit and adopt a business license for businesses in the unincorporated areas, so that when they answer the call, they know what's behind those walls. Thank you.
Carl?
Thank you.
Carl, you mentioned volunteers. Sometimes, most of the time in fact, on those volunteer fire departments, they have to pay for their own training, as you know. I also know you spent time in Chief Brazil's office at the Harbor Fire Center there, and I had the privilege of doing that two or three times. And he had a picture of Sam Hall, Judge Sam Hall, in his window seal. And probably not very many people in here would remember who that is, but he was Judge. You do, Steve? Yeah. And it was just a golden moment for me to be able to connect with John on that and tell some Judge Hall stories. Judge was just an incredible county servant, and it, his service, 11 o'clock at Capella's on Saturday, and the volunteerism he had was a tremendous inspiration to everybody in this county. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, getting back to John. The county is very, very grateful for his service. I personally am grateful for his service because I've worked with the Kate Ferrello Fire Department. He's been very helpful with our department in all he's done. So, the county would like to thank John Brazil for providing his many years of service to the citizens of Curry County as chief of the Harbor Fire District, serving on numerous county committees and serving our county. The county would like to recognize his dedication with a certificate of appreciation. And I think that's the very least we can do. I think many people were affected by his service in this county. So, this is what we will be doing. Next, Floris Lake. We have a number of people who would like to speak to this issue. Teresa Byrd.
Hi, I'm Teresa. I live in Port Arford, and I just wanted to briefly emphasize that there is a lot of people who were here last meeting and who've been following this issue for a long time that can't be here today, but that would really love to see you guys move forward in this process. And I know you're discussing appraisals today of the property, and it would be disappointing to some and many, I think, to see this be stalled any further, and I really hoping that your Board can move this process forward. And I think that there is probably lots of different ways that this could go, but most people that live in Floris Lake area and especially Northern Curry County that want to see it preserved would love to get some solid information of the appraisal of the current land swap and see that you could work through those issues and possibly move forward with it. And I think this, you know, as you know, it's been kicked down the can, the can's been kicked down the road several times, and it'd be really helpful for people to see some solid movement. So I just would like to emphasize that we do support you moving forward with this land swap that was discussed at the last meeting, and hopefully can find some good, solid information from that. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Ann Velasis?
Thank you. My name is Ann Velasis, and I'm President of the Kelmeopsis Audubon Society and represent, I think, a number of people in North Curry County also on this issue. I just want to, I'll echo what Teresa said. We hope that you can move forward on this step of working towards an appraisal with the idea that we can move to getting something done on this issue that's been going on for quite some time. I'll just mention that yesterday afternoon, Commissioner Huxley forwarded to me an email that raised some concerns about this, and I appreciate Commissioner Huxley's, I'm sorry, he's not here today. I think he's interested in transparency and creating good discussions on it. So I just wanted to respond to some of the points that were made in that letter, which is the idea that maybe the county should repackage the property into a bigger configuration and hold out for a better deal. And I think, on one hand, I would love to see that happen because I would see, I'd love to have that kind of, we'd love to see protection or figure out a way to deal with all Floris Lake lands. However, I'm really concerned that if you were to kind of take that comment and stall this process, that it would really lead us to failure because after being involved in this for many years, I'm aware that the other public lands agencies that he mentioned, such as ODFW, Bureau of Land Management, have, in my experience, they have not really expressed interest in these lands. My impression is everybody's sort of thinking, oh, nothing's probably going to happen there, we don't have to worry about it. And everybody, of course, has budget constraints, staff constraints. It's only because Curry County finally did some work on this, did that public workshop up in Langloes and created momentum to say, hey, we really want to work with you on this, that State Parks has come and had a very, I think, productive dialogue with staff to figure out what is a practical, feasible project we can work on that would be a win-win. So, I think that's what we have before us, and I think the appraisal is a really good step to getting more information to consider that. It's not a, you know, you will have to make that decision later, but I just want to emphasize that I think there's, there's a lot to be had from the goodwill of working together with State Parks to build trust, to move forward, and maybe it will even lead to better things in the future. So, just want to say that, and thank you for giving, yes, you have a question?
Sorry, I just didn't want you to leave there.
Oh yeah, sure, I'd be happy to answer questions. As you all know, and I don't, some people in the audience know, I have been working on this issue quite closely, probably for 12 years, through many different Commissions and many different staff people. So I feel like, as, you know, as a volunteer, I feel like I have been out there, I have a lot of information about it, and of course, I have, I know there are many, you know, there are different perspectives, but I just wanted to share that with you.
Well.
Mr. Boyce?
Thank you. First thanks for all those years you have put in on this project, and it's bearing some fruit. And I just, for one, as a county resident, really appreciate that. You and Ms. Byrd taking the time, expense, to travel here today, I think, has to go to mention. You mentioned also that an appraisal, just one quick question, Ms. Velasis, that you didn't want to see the timber involved in that as far as accrues, and I, and I think I understand where you're coming from, but that's part of the value, and even in saying that might give you the impression that I or we think it could actually be logged someday, and even if the value is there, which I don't believe it is. And you've made, these two letters you sent are excellent, by the way.
Yeah.
But that's part of the appraisal, and so I'm just, I'm hung up just a little bit on that.
Yeah, and I am too, and I, what I did is I tried to talk to, you know, a friend of mine who's a forester and say, okay, it's going to cost the county $8,000 to do this extra appraisal. And so is it possible that the value of the timber out there will outweigh that so that we have a higher valuation for the property? You know, his impression was, gosh, if you count the, how, the expense of getting the timber out of that remote place and the requirement to, that the state has to reforest the area, and this, as you say, it doesn't mean that we're going to do this, cutting the trees down or reforesting, but the appraisal will have to consider that, that that's a lot of cost to the county, or a lot of cost, you know, and if you're appraising is going to, appraising for timber value accounts for what is the value of the wood you're going to sell, and what is the cost of doing the business, which entails cutting the timber, getting it out, and then reforesting. So that was his take, that was my, I was just kind of attempting to kind of inform that discussion a little bit more to make sure you were aware of the costs. It could be that the way the bids are structured, that the, the appraiser could go out and say, yeah, oh, I agree with that, or say, gosh, there really is, I think there is timber value that would exceed $8,000, in which case maybe, you know, maybe there's a contingency to that bid, so that you don't just pay the money and then find out, oh, gosh, it wasn't worth it. So that's what I was bringing up.
Well, thank you. I think the county's in a strong position because there is tremendous value there, and it's, as the appraiser notes in offering his services and contract here, it is, the aesthetics part of that, and so he recognizes that already. Also, thanks for your volunteer to, to take the appraiser into that area.
Yes, I wanted to mention that, too. Yeah, it's, it's not hard to walk in there, but it's very easy if somebody knows where the corner is to just walk directly there, and I think that could help save the time of the appraisers. They would probably need to just come out for a day to walk around and look at what's there, I'm guessing, unless they did a timber cruise, which I asked my friend who's a forester, Jim Rogers, how long would it take to do a timber cruise on 70 acres? And he said it would probably take four days of work, so that's $8,000, four days' travel. I mean, that was just a ballpark estimate, but I was just kind of trying to understand if this was a good value and to be able to present information on that.
I know, too, you spent a lot of time with Representative David Brock Smith on, on this issue, and I know it's very important to him, and I talked to him this morning, and he's, he doesn't see a risk, and I want to get your, your take on this, but he doesn't really see a risk that if we split the property up, Assessor Collins' letter did have impact on me, and I've had other members of the, of the county that have, that have also expressed splitting it up may be risky for the county as far as in potential future negotiations. But David Brock Smith does not really feel that is, or should be, a concern right now, and, but do you also share that same feeling?
I do share that feeling, and, you know, one of the things, if we had more time to find a little bit more information, and maybe this is stuff we can find out for talking to State Parks in the future, one of the things that I think, and I don't, they've not said this to me, because I have, I mean, the county is the one that's been really working with them. I've had little conversations here and there, like at the end of the last meeting or things like that. But my impression is that the other parcel is actually, it has some encumbrances that make it a little bit more complicated to do the deal. As you know, one of the things we haven't really talked about is there are a few inholdings there, there's plating that's existing, and so to prepare a property for appraisal and for swap, I think a lot of those things would need to be dealt with ahead of time, and that could be costs for them or for us. And I don't know if that's part of why they wanted to just kind of work on a first thing that was simple and straightforward to see if we could make it work, but that would be maybe something to learn more about in the process so that, because I think that would be a valid concern if I was a state agency of taking on some of that. It's one of the reasons this whole thing has been so complicated and difficult to, to get to the bottom of it, so.
You know, the State Parks with Dennis Comfort and Larry Becker, I'm, of course, I'm telling them that those encumbrances you referenced are part of our, part of our mystique and part of the values, so I'm, you know, trying to improve the county position, and I think they're, they're listening to that.
Yeah, and one of the things about that, oh gosh, I'm like losing my train of thought in a minute, I think it is good, well, I guess I was thinking all along when we've been dealing with that question, there's, the thing that's come up is we can't just sell those properties because if we sell them, the money will have to go to all the taxing districts, so it won't benefit the county, and that...
And that is a very good point.
The, the fact is that the State Parks has, they may have greater capacity with professional real estate staff and all those, that the county doesn't have to actually work on some of that. And the idea of putting together a package that's more complicated and has all these things is, you know, could be wonderful, but the reality is that it takes county staff quite a lot of time to do all these things, and that's what, you know, that's kind of what's hampered us along the way, because of course, there's many things that county staff need to work on aside from this. So, that idea of figuring out how to engage the professionalism of that or agency might help us, anyway.
Thanks, Ann. We appreciate.
I have a question for Administrator Schroeder. Well, after, do you have another speaker?
Why don't we, why don't we do that during?
Great, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have one more person, Ann Morgan.
Hello, Ann Morgan, 27684 Hunter Creek Road here in Gold Beach. I'm, I turned in three letters for the Commissioners, and so the letters will speak for themselves. And I would like to say that I am in support of some type of reasonable swap. I don't know all of the ins and outs and ramifications, it sounds like Ms. Velasis has a lot of information to share, and so I thank her for that. I sent an email last week because I wasn't able to be here, and thank you, Commissioner Boyce, for responding to my email. And so you'll now have something in writing again. I've lived in the South Coast, not always Curry County, but Southern Coos County and Curry County for 35 years. I've spent a lot of time in the North County, and certainly appreciate the, the special, the specialness of that part of the North County. And so I do want to encourage you to work forward with a swap that will keep that parcel intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Administrator Schroeder, maybe you could shed further light on this whole issue.
Are you going up to the podium?
All right, so this is a continuation of discussion that we had at a workshop on August 8th. The direction from the County Board was to come back with a estimate or a couple estimates for what it would take to appraise this property. Just to refresh your memory, this is a Floris Lake area here, this is, yellow here is the county land, the, the blue is the State, State Parks land. The piece of property that we're interested in changing for is down here, Cedar Forest right along Highway 101, right next to the high school. This is divided into two separate properties, one to the north of Airport Road, about 10 acres, one to the south. The road, about 20 acres. I did have a call that somebody was concerned that lived on, on the other part of the 430-acre property that had an easement, and she was concerned that this property was an easement for her property, but it is not. So all we're talking about is this 70 acres is right in here. There are a couple ways to access this when we're talking to the people that are going to do the appraisal. One methodology is to come across the lake and use a boat. So one of the appraisers basically has two, two prices on his bid, one if we provide a boat, and one if he has to bring his own boat to do that. There probably is a way to hike through here to, to get to this from the Cape Blanco area. So that might be another, another method for people to get there. You can, as you can tell from the aerials here, you know, there's a lot of water on there, it's fairly swampy, so they'll have to, even getting to the property and walking around, it will be a challenge for them. So with that, we, we had one bid that basically had an initial inspection completed by Mr. Woods, and Mr. Roach reveals if they don't feel it's worthwhile taking out the lumber was $7,000. If the initial inspection completed by them and involves our boat, they would have $6,450. And if they're looking at doing a timber cruise, it would be $14,950. And that is from Taylor Wood Appraisal Services LLC out of Salem. From feedback from the Board from the last meeting we had, we were looking for, and basically Carolyn had worked with this company before, the Park Services worked with that company before, we reached out to two other parties to get another estimate on appraisals. We reached out to Jeff Marinlu.
Marino.
Marino, thank you. And he has basically proposed a appraisal of $6,350 and a timber cruise of $4,500 for a total fee of $10,850. And so they both talk about the timeframe, what it, what it would take to get the job done. I'm assuming to be similar, both these individuals, my understanding, that they have also been working.
The Park Service also put estimates on what 32-acre parcel, or the 30-acre parcel could be here, if they are obviously also going to be doing a appraisal on. Timelines, the Park Service is going to get their estimates back by August 30th, and they'll make a decision in the first part of September to go forward with an appraisal on that, because according to legal, although we need, both parties need to have appraisals on this type of property for the evaluation. So I guess at this time, we'd be looking for directions of the County Board to say if we want to, which part will we rent the lumber, and if we want to do timber at this time. Of course, we've heard discussions about that, you know, the feasibility of getting that lumber is, you know, would it be very complicated? Would it be very complicated due to the, to the location? You will not be able to put in a, you know, you'll never put a road in through the Park Service to get timber.
Service to get timber out of there. Question is, would you be able to come up to Cranberry Farm to come in and bring a cross to go through there, or we do have access, we do have a road that comes in from the north into this property? Either case, there's substantial disruption to try to get lumber out of there, so I would rely on the county board to give direction if they want to spend the money to have a timber cruise on it.
Commissioner Boyce?
The timber cruise is not for, from my perspective, is not for harvest, it's for the value of the trees as they sit, hopefully forever. I mean, that was my understanding. So timber cruises don't necessarily mean that we value on the ground, we, you know, and I'm sure you know that, but, so access is not an issue. And again, I want to give the county the best bargaining position that we possibly can, as I know everybody here does. So the 4,500 that came from Marano, the original firm that you mentioned, what was their bid?
They had $7,000 if they used their boat, $6,450 for the appraisal, if they used our boat, and a total cost of $14,950.
So about a $4,000 difference.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions. The timber, if it's inaccessible, would the value of that property be less? That would be the first question, or do we even know that?
We needed timber appraisal to determine that, I think, Madam Chair.
Okay, but-
More data to analyze, assess.
I-
It's not just the timber itself, but the accessibility, I would think.
In my conversations with Carolyn, and she's not here today, but it was my impression that a timber cruise basically was the value, the value of the timber itself.
Okay, and that, nothing else?
Yeah, and that would be the valuation of that. Now, the question is, would that ever be done, from a physical standpoint or a political standpoint, I guess, that's a separate question. I'm not, I will say I'm not experienced in this area, so, Mr. Huddle, do you have any opinion if timber cruise basically accounts for the removal of the timber, or the value of timber on a property?
I've seen timber cruises before, and I, I think I've had a timber cruise where they don't actually charge you for the work done to do the cruise, it's more like, the experience I've had is where the person doing the timber cruise is some type of a licensed or certified forester or forestry expert. These guys are sort of like a project manager, and what they do is they come onto the property, and it's kind of like getting an estimate for work to be done, you know, like if you're going to have a house kitchen remodel, you'd get some contractors, they come in, they do an estimate. This is a hyper, or it's an example, it's not exact, but, and what these people do is they come in and they look at the land, they look at the timber, and they look at all the issues, like you said, access. They then value, you know, the raw value of the trees on the market, these people know what mills buy what trees, and they pay what amount for what trees. They estimate the board feet and the stand, and then they estimate also the costs involved in, you know, harvesting, how much will it pay for the sawers and the truckers and, you know, the logging equipment mobilization, and then they take that out of the cost. So once you get a timber cruise, as the owner of the piece of land, you know what's the raw value of the market value of the timber on your land, and what are the costs, and then you, as the owner, make a decision whether, you know, you're going to get enough money out of the project to go forward or not. And then the people managing the project get paid a percentage of the overall profit, so, but my experience with timber cruises is, a property owner doesn't pay upfront for someone to do a timber cruise, that there's foresters who, their job is, once they do a timber cruise for you, is to, they get paid out of the work in that way. So I, you know, maybe you and Carolyn and the speakers here are talking about a different kind of timber cruise than I'm familiar with, but I think it'd be worth talking to a couple of foresters and ask them, do they charge for timber cruises, will they do a timber cruise, those kind of things. So that's just my experience with timber cruising. And, you know, I'm just one person, that was just one example, so maybe there's other people who know more about this, but I think calling a few professional foresters, sometimes even, believe it or not, you can call the mills themselves, the mills have guys called log buyers, and sometimes the log buyers will come down from the mill and look at your property and give you an estimate of how much they'd pay for the trees on your land, and so there's, there's a lot of different ways to figure out how much a stand of wood is worth, you know, just in the market out there. So I don't know what's been done on this, I haven't been involved in the project, but that's just, you know, my two cents on my experience with timber cruising.
In a way, I think we're kind of talking about apples and oranges here, because I don't think there's any intention of harvesting the timber. I think, and I'm hoping, that the state just wants to know what the timber itself is worth. I don't know whether that would include accessibility or not, and I think that's probably an important question, because the value of the property, I would think, would go down if that accessibility issue is put in there.
Well, I think, if you're talking, could I?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
No, I just don't know why we would take that position, because why don't we just give it away then, if it's no access and no value, and so I don't need to be tongue-in-cheek here, but-
No, I'm not, I'm not putting it down or anything, I'm just trying to, to-
It's an incredibly valuable piece of property, and, yes, go ahead.
Council Huddle?
Well, thanks, and I know Commissioner Gold, you said apples and oranges, and I think what you're talking about is, you know, different ways to value a piece of property. But I will say this, so there's one thing going on out there, that some timber companies will log their land, get the value from the wood out of it, and then they'll sell the bare land for, you know, private people to build a home, or put it into conservation, or do whatever. So there's value in the wood and value in the real property, and, you know, even though before it's harvested, timber is real property, I don't want to get Carl King excited by talking about two different things, a real property. But all I'm saying is, a timber cruise would give you an idea of one part of the value, of the overall value of that property. But there's intrinsic value beyond just what the wood's worth left over, even if you did log it. There's also value in keeping the wood, wood, and, you know, I've heard carbon sequestration or some of these other concepts, but, but again, you just got, all a timber cruise is a piece of information to let you know, and then after that, you can decide, you know, that helps you know how much the property's valued at. Usually, it would be the timber value plus some residual value could help give you the value of your property. But I don't know what these professional appraisers do, but most, I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think you would get a guy to come in for free and give you a timber cruise if you said, yeah, we want a timber cruise from you, Mr. Forester, but we don't intend to log. The guy's going to say, I'm not doing that, because I'm only going to get paid for it.
Well, I think that's why we're paying.
But we'll provide the boat.
Yeah.
One second question. Ann Velasis mentioned that it's possible to walk the land fairly easily. Have you looked at that possibility?
Well, I have walked, I've come in through here and walked into this property and walked in this general area. You have to get permission, obviously, from the Cranberry Farm to do that and check in with them, and so you can walk over, I've never walked over to this far. I have walked up this general direction, but without a GPS, I can't tell what land I'm on anymore, so.
Okay. You might want to step up to the microphone.
There's a trail that goes from State Park, or from Boyce Cove Park, just right around the lake that you can walk, there's literally a very, it's an old road, easy trail to walk right to, there's a, there's a survey mark right at that point, so it's very easy to bring them there, orient them, show them pathways down through here, because we've walked this part in particular many times, it's very, it would literally take a half an hour to 40 minutes at the most.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if we could save money by doing it that way, would that be a possibility? I don't know.
Yeah, they may not be aware of that, they may not be aware of that option to walk down there, so. The other question, the other question that we have is, and I know Kami from the Park Service had talked about this, and I can't remember her answer, which is, what if there's a disparity between the values of the property? Now granted, we have more property, but it's less accessible, they have less property, but it's on 101. You know, what happens if one's worth, you know, $300,000 and one is worth $400,000?
Wow.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we can deal with that when I think that time comes.
Yeah, well, the court's already interrupted, but the reason I think you want to think about that is, if your value includes the timber on there, you're increasing the value of your property.
Oh, you know, I'm not, I'm not against a timber cruise, just to let you know.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify in my mind what it would do.
We're moving the process forward, though, and I don't, I don't see any discussion today that compromises that, so I'm thankful for that. Back to the appraisals, we're basically going to do our own individual appraisal of our property, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't have this clear, and the state's going to do an appraisal of their property, or how are we coming together?
Yeah, they're going to do an independent appraisal, they might even use the same individuals, probably, you know, there are not that many people that do this. So they'll do one, and we'll do one, and probably in a month or two, or probably at least two months, we'll come back together and figure out where we're at.
So, Madam Chair, based on that, I would, my preference is to do the timber cruise in conjunction with this full appraisal. The more data, the more information we have, the more we can explain to our citizens why we did the appraisal, where, the direction we're trying to go here, future potential opportunities with the state, as Ms. Velasis said, building a relationship, I think that's happening. I certainly am impressed with the people who represent state parks that are trying to, again, responsibly move this forward, so I would prefer an appraisal.
Okay, so do you have a motion?
Also move, if we have any other discussion, excuse me.
Do you want to be more specific?
Which person?
Well, I have a little bit, I know Jeff Marano, I've known him, and I even knew his father years ago, so I-
The Marano bid is 10, all in is $10,800, the other bid is $14,900, so it is a cheaper bid, so.
Which bid included, did they both include timber cruise?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, Council-
No, I don't think you have a conflict.
Thank you.
Ann Velasis?
You got to come up here.
I would just like to follow up on the timber cruise question, or for clarification, because I did reach out to talk to a forester, Jim Rogers, to just look at the bid, there was only one bid in the packet, which was the Tyler Woods bid, to say, how does this work? So to try to give you the benefit of that, he indicated that a timber cruise does include the value of the timber, minus the amount of money it would take to remove it, minus the amount that it would take to reforest it. So what I guess I was suggesting, one thing that looks good in the Tyler Woods bid, is that it looks like there's one that's almost a contingency, like if those guys get out there and say, hmm, yeah, this wood is just scrappy, there's no way it's going to be worth more than $8,000, if they could just do the appraisal at that point, that would be great. Or if they get out there and say, wow, yeah, this really looks like it's going to take our time to do an appraisal that will be worth more than $8,000, we should do it. I don't know if there's a way to make that nuance, it would be a way to save the county money if it turns out that that timber doesn't have much value, so.
Thank you.
Well, and the timber cruise on the second one, I believe, was what, $4,000?
$4,500, and you both have copies of that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say, through experience, Christopher Pash, Gold Beach, Council Huddle's exactly right on this. I recently have had two companies come to my ranch, looking to thin a lot of the trees off my ranch, and both of the bids were free. They came in and gave me an estimate of what it would cost for them to come in and remove the timber, and then the timber's value at the mill, and how many board feet that would be, and that was all free, so something to consider.
A little bit of difference, though, I don't think we're planning on harvesting, like you were planning on harvesting, so there would be no reason for them to come for free.
But it's collecting information, that's the, getting as much as you can, so.
If I were an appraiser, I wouldn't come to the county's property and do it for free, to be honest with you. Sure, come on up, or-
We're not in any hurry here, this is really important.
I was just going to say, I have my own business where I can do timber cruising, and what they're talking about is different than official appraisals, so there is definitely that case where that happens, but in an official appraisal, it's a different process. And I'm just confused a little bit, so maybe you can answer this question, but State Parks said that the appraiser looks at the highest and best use, so maybe that's what, to follow up on what Ann was saying, that they can decide if it's worth doing a timber cruising or not in their appraisal, and they can say, like, they can appraise the property without the timber, or they can say, we need to appraise the timber to get the highest and best use. So I think that could be their decision also, potentially.
Okay, so, you have a motion on the floor to-
Accept the bid from Marano Appraisals, and I would add to that, Madam Chair, that we want the appraisal from the county position to be an equal emphasis on the value, the aesthetic value, and through his, through all of his experience, I think that would go without saying, and he recognized that and referenced it in his letter, thank you. Is that too long a motion?
So, bottom line, you want a motion to have Marano do the appraisal with the timber cruise?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
We'll put it in n-words or less, I'll second that. Any further discussion? I think we've had it all. Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I would bring one up, one point to close this particular item. And this is just more of a procedural observation that I'm making, and this is mostly for the public also. When we have public comments, public comments are three minutes for the public just to give information to the county board. When you come into the agenda item, that's when you end up with discussion, and we kind of ended up with both discussion, public comments, and discussion here. I would prefer, from a management standpoint, to have all the discussion around the agenda item versus having give and take from the commissioners during a public comment period, but that's just my recommendation.
I'm not following you. I mean, isn't that what we just did?
Well, no, so we had, we had half, half the discussion was during public comments.
Okay.
And then we went, this is, this is just how you flow things, so the public comments, you receive information, and then you move into the agenda, that's when you have the dialogue. Just a fine point.
So where are we right now on the agenda?
We're on D2.
Where are we? We're going to approve the tentative SEIU agreement, and we've got one public comment. We've already taken care of the other issue, I can-
I thought he was just talking about that, and the council asked, where are we on the agenda right now? I thought we, so we are, we are done with D2?
We're all, yeah, we're all, Mr. Huddle is just making a point to me to say, move on.
No, it's a legitimate question. Don't worry, I'm closer to him.
He's smooth about that. So next on the agenda is SEI Union contract. The background, Curry County negotiate, was negotiating with the SEI Union since March.
Excuse me, we've got one public comment on that issue before we-
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Carl King?
Carl King, Naseka Road. As you're aware, I sat on the Budget Committee, and I want to be very careful what I say. Had your negotiations been completed, and the tentative agreement reached prior to the budget hearings, I personally would have voted to include in the budget the funds necessary to fulfill your tentative agreement. In other words, setting aside any discussion of procedure, timing, personalities, and the like, as a financial matter, as a member of the Budget Committee, in my humble opinion, the settlement is a fair and reasonable one. In my professional life, we always said, if you had a settlement that no one was happy with, and both sides were equally unhappy with, it must be a good one. And I believe personally that you have reached, with the union, a good settlement, and it ought to be approved, whether it needs further action by the Budget Committee, or an amendment of the budget without the Budget Committee. I don't speak to, but I think the agreement was a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. You're on.
Thank you. Actually, before I read my memo, I will highlight that Commissioner Huxley had sent a two-page memo, and he basically was offering an opinion concerning the process of the negotiations of the union contract itself. He would like to make a claim that there was like an open- He would like to make a claim that there was like an open meeting violation, and he had some other information. It's a two-page memo, we will post it on the, uh, on the website for people to read.
Okay.
With that, back to the memo. Curry County has been negotiating with SEI Union since March. After final offers and mediation, the county and the union reached a tentative agreement. This agreement needs to be ratified by both entities in order to finalize the contract. I got a email last night at 6:00 PM that the union ratified their contract with a member vote. So that, that was done prior to us voting. The agreement stipulates that union employees will receive 2.13% increase retroactive to July 1st, 2018, and an increase of county contribution to healthcare of $100 per month per employee retroactive to July 1st. With that, staff would recommend, uh, approving the agreement with SEI Union dated 8/1618.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement?
Question?
Sure.
Administrator Shoder, what's when you got that email, 6 o'clock, were you holding your breath?
No, it, it, it goes back and forth, actually, it's, uh, there are cases where counties approve first, and others the union approve first, and vice versa, so I was not worried about that.
So Madam Chair, I'll move that we accept this amendment and this agreement, and, uh, thank goodness, get it behind us.
Okay. I'll second that. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, Pacific Gales and Land Use Board of Appeals. Council Huddle?
Oh, thank you. This was just a matter for the board's information and perhaps the public's, but if you recall, um, there was an application by the developers of the golf course to use treated effluent from Port Orford and pipe it and apply it for land irrigation on the golf course property. That came through our planning commission, who denied the application for various reasons. Uh, it came to the board on local appeal, the board actually reversed the planning commission and approved it. The opponents appealed that to the Land Use Board of Appeals, and the Land Use Board of Appeals affirmed the Board of Commissioners' decision in every, in, in almost every aspect, so, um, and the one that they didn't comment on, they said it didn't matter. So, really, um, we're still in an appeal period, so it doesn't make a lot of sense, and, so after you go to the Land Use Board of Appeals, if you, if you're a party who is not, thinks there was an error by the Land Use Board of Appeals legally, you can go to the Court of Appeals. We're still within that appeal period, so it doesn't make any sense to comment on that. If I could add one other item as well, uh, recently, at the Circuit Court, um, and this came in since the agenda was presented, there was the issue with the livestock district annexation. Um, the Circuit Court judge held that the, um, Board of Commissioners made a mistake when we agreed with Warehouser's application to annex property that was not contiguous, so the, and, and, um, that was the position of the, um, the neighboring property owners, and we, uh, tried to concede error, we did concede error, that we did make a mistake, and, um, the, the judge agreed that it was. Um, we are also still in the appeal time period for that, and so again, uh, there's really nothing really to discuss on that, because it's still a, you know, a matter of potential litigation, but that's just a summary factual of what's happened, um, and, and so, you know, the next step is going to be up to the other parties, so...
Okay, how long is the appeal?
I think, I think there's, you, thank you, I think it's a 30 days to appeal from a Circuit Court judgment. Now, I'd said the, the Circuit Court ruled, but the ruling was a letter ruling, but it hasn't been reduced to a judgment, there's a process to go from ruling to judgment, we're in that process. Once the judgment gets recorded, then, uh, there's, I believe, a 30-day appeal period. I, I, I would refer to a statute, I think it's in ORS Chapter 19, and I don't, I don't want anyone to think, well, John Huddle said we have...
That's okay, we don't need to get in the way.
I know, John Huddle said we have 30 days, that's really not what I'm saying, that's just, it's around 30 days, but whoever is interested in doing an appeal needs to go look at the statutes for themselves and, and figure that out. But it's just, what, what my real, um, what I'm really trying to say is, there's really, the board should not be discussing it, because there's still a potential that it could proceed further in legal steps, but, um, that's all.
Commissioner Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just two things. Your work on this, this was, this is no, this is a humbling thing, because we did make a mistake, and your work on this, it's basically Curry County on behalf of some very hard-working ranchers, Curry citizens, uh, you know, taking on Warehouser, and so I give you, uh, a real genuine compliment on the work you did. Also, the, the amount of time you spent on the Oak River property development, uh, every minute was worthwhile, uh, that was, that's been a hard fought, uh, battle, and, uh, so much appreciated for the time and the, uh, the job you did there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All I can say is, I'm glad I'm not a lawyer.
I'm, I'm glad you're not a lawyer. I was going to say, I might be glad you're not a lawyer, that you'd be a pretty formidable opponent, so I, I...
I don't know about that. Okay, well, it looks like we've gone through all of the items on the agenda, so this meeting is adjourned.
Well, I could go in a little more detail.
Sorry about going off base.